...order. When, uh, sorry, I haven't got your back. If you please stand, uh, three moments. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its manifold blessings. All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Mr. Herner?
Here.
Mr. Merrick?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Ms. Borba?
Here.
I'm gonna read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was included in the annual meeting notice filed in their office in the Borough Clerk, posted on the Borough website and on the bulletin board in the municipal building, published as a legal notice in the Co-Star newspaper and mailed to those requesting notice and providing payment in accordance with Borough policy. Can I get an approval of the agenda with one addition, which is Resolution R. 2016-131, which is, uh, hiring a part-time, who works fully at full time?
Make that motion.
Second. Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
Yes.
Motion to pass.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the July 11, 2016 regular session.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Campion?
Obstinate.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
Yes.
Were the executive session minutes in there too?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I saw it in there. I wasn't questioning, it's all the hard work you've got on the minutes, I just thought I saw it in there, sorry. Uh, we don't have any presentations at this time, or any scheduled public hearings, which brings us to our public comment section, for agenda items only. If you have something to say about any of the items that are on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and address the chair. Seeing no hands, can I get a motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
The public comment section.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borba?
Yes.
We do have an item of discussion, which is our Capitol Program Status Report, which has, uh, had some unfortunate changes due to our state government. But Jay's gonna make the report, right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Probably if I just briefly go through them, uh, just to give everyone a status update and ones that require specific attention, uh, we'll deal with as we come to them. First of all, under our grant applications, the energy audit that has been, uh, the applications submitted, uh, we have, uh, received review comments, and those are, uh, under review. The Monmouth County Open Space Grant, this, uh, grant cycle has an application deadline of September six, uh, September 14th. The Parks and Recreation Committee has reviewed various opportunities and, uh, will be proposing, uh, improvements to the community center playground. Just by way of background, you'll recall that the Monmouth County Open Space Program provides for a 50 percent match, uh, with a $250,000 maximum. Uh, the plan is still in formulation stages, uh, but due to the cycle of the application, it's being proposed that we schedule a public hearing, uh, at the next regular meeting on August 15th. That will require public notice, and, uh, that hearing would be conducted on, uh, while the brief presentation on the proposal, essentially is the replacement of the playground equipment and some sidewalk and site improvements related to just the playground portion of the community center. Anything more to add regarding?
Well, I was informed by our superintendent public budget, perhaps Joe would like to talk about, that's apparently, there's issues where there needs to be replaced, it's just not something.
Our council, uh, that equipment is nearing its useful life, the end of its useful life, and, uh, we've done some work to repair it, uh, quite frankly, we need to replace it, um, before it meets its end of its useful life.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna build a grant for it, bring it up here, get it, uh, removed, replace something new, and, uh, also may incorporate some shade requests, I know that's a people looking for some, uh, structural shade in that area, uh, include the drainage there, which makes the fiber over that whole safety net a little bit longer, um, that's what we're gonna be implementing. And call it public.
And one of the issues that they point out is although, when you go up there, you say, oh, this still looks really great, what happens, it's metal on the inside, it's totally vinyl, and although it looks great, inside, it starts rotting away, it starts rusting away, and that's the fear.
And then, yeah, and one of the support beams, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So, uh, we've gotten these grants before, right? Uh, how much of the cost of the project did you typically cover?
Well, it's a 50 percent match.
Okay, 50 percent match, again.
And as some, uh, council partner knows, you can spend a lot or a little bit on the equipment, whatever.
Yeah.
You know, there's a lot on it, and there's...
I get what you pay for, essentially. And you're aware about a space?
Yeah.
And how it works.
Space dictates the size of the equipment, essentially, in your areas.
So let's go for the grant, and then, uh, we'll see what we can budget through.
Is there any kind of work we can do, or is it just the cash?
Well, we give you a lot of time, I mean, the majority of the grant.
Do they accept that though, for any time?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I believe they do, although there may be a limitation on that within the overall...
So that's work that we could do towards our 50 percent grant? It's allowed, some grants do.
Evolution prepared.
Rip everything out?
Yeah. If that evolution is required, you know. We can also purchase the equipment ourselves, as part of the matching out the installation, because the installation has to be done by a certain contractor, so that's, that's what we get at the other report as well. Yeah, we purchase the equipment, so we can get that more upon as well.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Moving down, the items that have, uh, been checked off aren't included, or in this case, the community development lot grant, uh, we are not eligible to submit an application this year as we receive the grant question. Uh, the NJDOT Safe Roots, the school, we have submitted a preliminary application, uh, and identified Windsor and Parkview terraces as potential, um, areas, uh, that would be eligible for that grant. Um, DOT Municipal Aid, there is no date set, and I, we'll be speaking about this in more detail, I think you're, the council is well aware, of all DOT-funded municipal aid projects are currently on hold, we have two of those that are in the works that we'll talk about in a minute or two. Uh, DPW Equipment Purchases, the Rome Law Container Truck, uh, we've received bid, uh, bids were received in, uh, last week, and, uh, we will be proposing, the funding is in place for that, you can see that the bid did come in below the estimate, and, uh, we will be proposing the award of that, uh, purchase contract at our next meeting hours. Uh, Recycling Compactor, that's a, uh, third, fourth quarter project, and we are awaiting proposal on the tax map update. Uh, moving on to doing those in grounds, uh, probably the one of most importance there is the DPW Site Remediation, uh, this, this month, samples have been obtained on six of the wells, uh, and, uh, the NJDEP update has been prepared. All of the samples that were received are below the requirements for cleanup, so the natural attenuation seems to be working. Uh, there were two wells that require some additional maintenance work before the samples can be taken, and that will be completed within 30 days. Moving down to, uh, parks, repair and maintenance under the community center, uh, the council had a presentation here during, uh, the month of June with the architect, we are awaiting revised plans, and we expect to see them, the Blue Jays meeting scheduled tomorrow. Other items, just the ongoing work at various parks, uh, moving on to the next column, road and drainage, under street opening restoration, we have recently, uh, on Friday, been advised by New Jersey Natural Gas, that they will be proceeding with two projects, both in the northern section of, uh, Spring Lake Heights. The first, they are referring to as the Wall Road Project, and actually includes the replacement of the gas line along almost the entire stretch of Wall Road, and then additional areas of Woodland, Garden Place, Kipling, and Homestead. There's a second component to this, uh, which is, uh, they are calling the Greenwood Road Project, and that includes, uh, addition to Greenwood, parts of Parkview, Woodcrest, uh, Claridge, Pitney, and Windsor. The first project, Wall Road, that they actually expect to, or are anticipating convincing that work in August. Um, and then the second portion, the Greenwood Road portion, uh, will be during the summer quarter, but not until after Labor Day. These dates are very tentative, as I said, uh, those, that notice has just been received. In fact, the, uh, notification to us is so quick, or so recent, that, uh, we have not yet determined what utility work we want to get out of the way first. We have a number of, uh, fire hydrants that were a little bit lower on the priority list than now, because this work is being done, that, uh, those priority lists will be shuffled somewhere.
Jay, with this project, and the repaving of the road after they're done, what scope do they have to make sure we don't end up with a war zone down Wall Road after they're done with potholes and, and patches and, um, great, great question, councilman. I'd love a great answer.
As you know, uh, Mr. Johnson, we, very similar to Ocean Road Project.
Okay.
Um, what I spoke to Jay about is potentially, they set the six to eight, uh, four-week main, uh, construction time, six to eight weeks to relocate all services, depending if they do it, uh, consecutively or bond each other, it could be two months or four months. There is two months period for settlement, that will come in. So, reality is, they're gonna be paid this in the spring, because by December, uh, most likely, that's all that's been shot. At any rate, that'll give us time to do our utility relocation, anything we need to do in that area, however, it may be time to visit or look at, what do we take to be the whole road, because they're gonna pay a half of it.
So their scope is half, it's not 12 feet patch?
12 feet. It's 12, 13 feet, 20 foot road, so it's not quite exactly that, but, but, but very much.
I have a question.
So half of Wall Road would be better?
Well, in a lot of places, yes, yeah. Uh, it's going up Wall Road, and they're going Garden Place to the base of Crosby Road, which of course, that's the road we're gonna be repaving, Jeanette Norman Terrace. It would be who've us to contact then, if this is in phase three, let's say, this really, this is like two phases, they're gonna do one main, then the proposed gas main replacement in Greenwood, Woodcrest, and Claridge would be phase two, I'm guessing?
Yes.
If they get to that, so, phase three could very well be the road that we're paving. So if we tell them, why don't you get in here, if you're gonna put, replace the main on that road, let's do it now, so once they're done, because they have a five-year moratorium on that road afterwards, so I would suggest we go talk to them.
They, they were notified when, um, when we first started talking about this grant, and I have to check, but I believe that, that's jacked, but I'll, I'll check that.
You know, one hand doesn't, you know.
And we're both familiar with that, um...
The, uh, the next project that is underway is in fact, our DOT-funded municipal aid project for Crosby Road, Norman Terrace, and Jeanette Court. That project was out to bid, uh, at the time that the DOT issued their notification that due to the lack of agreement at the, between the legislature and the governor on future funding of the Transportation Trust Fund, all DOT-funded projects have been placed on hold. We immediately revised and issued an addendum on that project, and have pushed off the bid receipt date until August 9th. We were hopeful, and are still somewhat hopeful, that, uh, there will be some action. I think the council's aware, there have been discussions, uh, some of which have been detailed in the public publications, uh, regarding the, uh, the potential options for settling this agreement between the legislature and the governor. In the meantime, uh, Joe May has recommended that, uh, because this project is partially funded with DOT, and I don't think I need to remind the council that of the areas that we're proposing to reconstruct, uh, Jeanette Court is in the absolute worst shape.
It's a dirt road.
Uh, Joe has suggested that frankly, we, uh, bifurcate this project and take out the Jeanette Road portion, which by the way, is also the smallest portion of this project, and we pay for it ourselves, thereby eliminating the holdup on the DOT funding. Secondly, uh, this DOT holding of funds is wreaking havoc with all contractors. We're actually hopeful that if we can get this out, the bids received within 30 days, we actually may be able to take advantage of, uh, a large number of contractors whose jobs have been put on hold because of the DOT funding.
And you're able to do that because the portion, our portion, will be enough we're gonna spend anyway. You're not talking about spending any additional funds?
That's correct.
That we wouldn't ordinarily have to, right?
We're just, we're just allocating a portion of local funding for this three in particular. Uh, we have a clear to get with DOT, because the original application covers all three. Typically, DOT recognizes that because it's partially funded, we may very well, uh, change the scope of the job, because the funding was not all of the export. But, uh, if the council is generally in agreement with that, uh, Joe has indicated that, uh, within 10 days, we can be out on the street, uh, we have proposed, uh, tentatively, an August 31st date to receive the...
I think that would be great, I mean, that road is a mess. If we can, we need to get that done this year, regardless of what the state does, yeah, that, that would be mine.
That is the reality.
Yeah.
Two years.
I mean, there's a big giant dirt patch in the middle of that cul-de-sac.
Yeah, we have been holding it together very...
Yeah.
Uh, likewise, uh, our anticipation was that, uh, the next DOT project, which we have received funding for, the Mercer Avenue improvements, that was tentatively scheduled for also third, fourth quarter, but with the DOT funding, that is also put on hold. That brings us to, uh, well, I'll, I'll mention it briefly now, uh, we have also shuffled our priorities. We were looking on the utility side of a replacement of the sanitary sewer, right out here on Brighton Lane, uh, for replacement, that has now become a higher priority, because we will not be doing the full Crosby Road project, Joe, likewise, and I think that's the same tentative date as August 31st, which has opened. So again, because of this DOT funding issue, uh, it's forced us to reshuffle our priorities.
Do we know the scope of this?
We do.
Or do we have to, we don't have to investigate anymore, any more camera work or anything?
Um, right now, we still have no camera work to do, but we do know, uh, the first push, I'm happy to do, so we're starting there.
And I just wanted to, if you, when you do get the camera here, to go over to the other spot where the same problem exists between Prospect and Lake, and just see?
Okay.
Because it's where, if you remember, it's where the force name, or sewer, sanitary sewer comes up, and goes to gravity, it gives off gases, apparently, and that's what eats the pipe, and that's what happened here, and we have the same situation that, between Prospect and Lake, so we should expect the same result, the same thing, so we, we have to see that.
And this is a project that was funded by us, so we don't have to make this statement, right?
That's correct, yeah, that's totally funded by our water sewer utility grid, and is included in our cap rate plan as part of the 2016 budget. Uh, moving on to drainage projects, there are three that are in the works, uh, Park Avenue, Route 71, uh, the Ludlow Avenue, that's between Highway 71 and Railroad, uh, that involves some work that we've requested the New Jersey Transit do, the New Jersey Transit Drainage Ditch adjacent to the Railroad is the recipient of the stormwater running, so we've asked them to sort of, we're working backwards, having them do their work, if that doesn't solve the problem, we may end up doing some pipe work in that area as well.
Or some, or something.
Yeah, we, we have been cleaning and cleaning, it's very dry, as you know, it's hot, and we have to clean it.
We've talked about doing some, a whole new thing of pumping across the springway.
So, uh, we've been cleaning it, and went by, actually, and it's, yeah. Our jet pack is, makes it, uh, yeah, it's 15 cleaning jobs in about four hours, so...
That's the new piece of equipment?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Before we move on from roads, I have two things that I'd like to see added on the roads. I know that, again, we had another vehicle hit on Ocean Road, I believe.
Yes.
Is that true? Ford's a child, and I want to see two crosswalks marked on Ocean Road and Wall Road illuminated just like the railroad with signs and clear markings, community center and somewhere else to help slow traffic and give mark designated crosswalks, and I want it done like yesterday. We've been talking about it for a year and a half, pick a spot, get it done.
Yay!
Ocean Road's unit four, no, 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 it's required.
I don't want to hear next meeting, we're still talking about it again, I want to drive down and see that they're up, get it done.
You said two items, or they're, they're both, these two locations?
On Wall Road and Ocean Road, two locations that can break up the road and have safe spots that are marked and illuminated that people can cross out, just like we have on the railroad the county put in, similar things. Yeah, right by, like, the one that's by the park.
But you want one at the community center, and you want by the park?
Yeah.
But we already have one, where do you want on Wall Road?
I think you should do two of them, I think there should be one near the community center, and one either further east or west, I'll leave that to our engineer, I think we should do two over on Wall Road, try and split the road into thirds, so it's not see to the horizon and drive as fast as I can to get there.
Can you do a mid-block, Joe? It has to be corner to corner?
No.
I don't care where, we'll fix it.
We've got to find a spot.
Does anybody up here have any disagreement with that?
No.
I don't think so. Can you answer that if you want, because I don't...
No, I just wanted to make sure that... Mid-block, will we identify those requirements?
I didn't think they did.
Yeah, because we...
I know we all talked about it.
The Wall Road is not different, it's all...
Thank you.
Moving on to the water sewer utility, uh, the water system as well as the sanitary sewer map locating, this is an ongoing project, uh, the water tanks, as noted, those inspections were completed last year, our annual well inspections are scheduled, uh, will take place in September. Uh, hydrant valve replacement, again, that is ongoing, the priority listing will be changing, uh, we've completed, recently completed one additional hydrant, and, uh, now we'll be looking at those streets where the gas companies be coming in. Well, number four, closure, bids were received on this in, uh, June, uh, they are under review, the quick summary there is that, uh, we received three bids, uh, two were in the range of $160,000, one in the range of $300,000 plus. Our budget estimate on this and the funding that we have in place is $125,000. We have initiated, or should say, the engineers initiated discussions with the vendors, uh, to determine if scheduling is what drove the price up, uh, or whether, uh, there's something else that we need to look at. So, uh, either way, we will be making a recommendation for the next meeting, or rejecting those bids, or if we can find the additional funding to, uh, move ahead with that. An update on the unmetered services at public facilities, uh, two of the, just 10 have been completed, that is ongoing. Uh, moving on to the sanitary sewer side, the big project there is the Shore Road and Black Creek Waste Water Pump Stations, to be funded with the, uh, $650,000 HNGP grant, that's the hazard mitigation, that is FEMA money, uh, that became available after Sandy. Uh, we have allocated funds for the local share, uh, back in late May, we received a design proposal, and, uh, have recently received a second, you can see that the prices range from just over $60,000 to $125,000. Again, I expect that in our next meeting will be a formal recommendation to award, uh, that design contract. Uh, Fairway Mews Pump Station, a little lower priority, uh, because this is being funded totally by Borough Funds, uh, we have received a preliminary value equation of the facility, and are looking at a couple of, uh, alternate recommendations for correcting that. Essentially, it's pump replacement, perhaps a redesign, uh, there's also a generator replacement that, that we will probably move ahead with on a second, uh, or a separate basis. Uh, moving down, I already mentioned the sanitary sewer replacement, that's here on Brighton Lane, that's approximately 400, uh, feet of, uh, replacement of that pipe, and as all, has already been mentioned, the jet vac, that was awarded, we have received it, and, uh, that has been placed in service. Um, the final item there, utility vehicles scheduled for later this year, um, for pushes.
Uh, that brings us to our mayor and council reports. Let's start with Council and Mayor.
Uh, Jay pretty much mentioned everything that I would have mentioned.
Okay. Council and Schiller?
I got a couple things here, uh, we finished the bulk pickup, pickup on the north, Martin Town in the mews, picked up another 20 tons of material between the two. Uh, there's paper shredding, it's August 6th, and over the, uh, the school, if you got any, any of your shred, and I'd like to make a comment on the professionalism of the police department. I had occasion, unfortunately, uh, Sergeant Binnell and patrol and ramp were, came, and they were very professional, assisted us, and I felt they, they are a credit to the police department. One other thought, they, one of our residents, residents, uh, Leslie A. Lebruto, the graduate of the Spring Lake Heights Elementary School, who was the first graduate in 40 years to become valedictorian at Manswana Institute.
Thanks.
And this was a couple of years ago, when she graduated from Spring Lake Heights. Last Monday, she addressed the international partners at the United Nations, everywhere, in her role as environmental engineer. She is director of Island... Resilience Program for the Clinton Foundation. She oversees the island, islands conversion from diesel to, uh, clear energy, and she's one of our, our people.
Great.
And she's done a great job.
Definitely, yeah, man.
That's all I got.
Um, first, I'd like to just, um, give a little announcement from the chief. We have a retired sergeant, Sergeant, Sergeant Michael Johnson, who, unfortunately, is very critically ill, and at this time, and, um, probably will not come out of the hospital. And he asked that, um, I make an announcement about this, Michael was here, um, for quite a number of years, I know he worked under, uh, Chief Henderson, he worked under, uh, Chief Steets, he worked under Chief Fury, and, uh, and Zach, if you can add anything, feel free to, um, Officer Ramp is in the back there. But, the chief and, um, two of the other chiefs have been keeping vigil at the hospital, uh, with Mike and his wife, uh, so I would just like you to, uh, keep him and his family in your prayers. He would, he had lived in town for quite a number of years, and, uh, he has a son, um, I believe, maybe he lives in Manswana or somewhere, I'm not sure.
Yeah, he was a fire teacher in reality.
Yeah, so, um, we're talking somebody local that can really, um, use all the prayers that we can give. On another note, um, I just want to make a couple of, um, suggestions here. There's a lot of children that are riding bikes without helmets. Now, I know we have a very, very good program in our Spring Lake Heights school, and we do a lot of discussions about the use of the helmets, but we also have children that live in town that, um, go to other schools, or go to St. Catherine's or St. Rose, wherever, and, uh, they don't hear all these announcements, but there is a rule that, you know, you do have to wear a helmet, so I just encourage everyone that if they do see a youngster that is not wearing a helmet, I've been doing it on my screen, I don't know that the kids are real happy with me, but, um, I've been stopping them and asking them if they would, um, you know, please, uh, not ride their bikes unless they wear their helmets. And along with that, I would add that we need to be very cautious, because, um, the kids are out on their bikes, they're out on their scooters, and, uh, even walking.
Skateboards.
And since we don't skateboard, yep, and since we don't have, um, a lot of sidewalks in some of the areas, the kids, um, you know, when, when they're on bikes and scooters and skateboards and all of that, they are in the street, so, um, people have a tendency, again, on some of these streets in town, to go faster than they should, and if they're not from town, and they're here for the summer, uh, again, they're not always adhering, I mean, even though our police force does their very, very best, they can't be everywhere at one time, it's just impossible. So, that's all I have, I just wanted to make those two announcements.
Catherine Wood?
Yeah, I just want to commend Joe May, Jay Delaney, and me, Billis, for all the work they do with the grants, they save us a ton of money.
I have nothing to decide.
Soccer sign-ups this week, or of all, the form should be available tomorrow, anytime.
We'll see if we're ready to sign.
You're ready to sign.
If it goes to eighth grade. All right, that brings us to our reports, notices, and correspondences. We have our municipal court report for June 2016, our Spring Lake Heights monthly police report was included, uh, for June, our water sewer... Our water sewer utility revenue for 2016. There was JCPN public hearing notice for proposed charges, residential charges, changes of residential charges. And a letter and a resolution from the Monmouth County Board of Chosen Freeholders opposing JCPN reliability project. There was also, wasn't there something about just Gito spring again in our packet? I mean, they've already got it once this summer and they are doing it again. Tomorrow morning. So it was like, keep your pets inside and wash your children. Anyway. That is tomorrow, so look out for the trucks. That brings us to, did anybody else have anything? Notices? All right. So that brings us to ordinance introductions. We have none at this time. And now our resolutions. The first resolution is Resolution R. 2016-125, which is, let me get to it. Well, it is certifying that members of the Borough Council have reviewed the annual audit for the year 2015. Can I make a motion?
Second.
Motion to the second, then we'll do the roll call.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Shuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
If I could just ask everyone to hang out here for a minute, you have to assign the update. Thank you.
The next resolution is Resolution Number 2016-126, a resolution of the Borough Council approving a fireworks display at the Spring Lake Golf Club for July 30th at 9:00 p.m.
Make that motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Shuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next resolution is Resolution Number R. 2016-127, a resolution of the Borough Council authorizing an agreement with the county of Monmouth for installation of a traffic signal at County Route 47 and Old Mill Road, which is Warren Avenue, if you didn't know.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
They've already started the work.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Shuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next resolution is Resolution R. 2016-128, which is a resolution of the Borough Council authorizing a tax lien reduction payment. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Shuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next resolution is Resolution Number R. 2016-129, a resolution of the Borough Council authorizing a tax lien reduction payment. Different payment.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Shuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next resolution is Resolution Number R. 2016-130, a resolution of the Borough Council approving payment of the itemized claims set forth on July 22nd, 2016 bill list.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Shuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
Motion passed.
The next resolution was the resolution we added at the beginning when we approved the agenda, which is Resolution R. 2016-131, a resolution of the Borough Council confirming the probationary appointment of Peter Jankalewski as a public works laborer from a part-time position to a full-time position.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Shuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borback?
Yes.
Just Janine on your item one, it says August 1, 2006.
Okay, thank you. We will correct that.
That brings us to the end of our resolution, which brings us to our public comment section. This public comment section, you can comment on any item on the agenda or off the agenda. If you have something to say, please approach the chair, state your name and address and say what you got to say.
Good evening, Zach, the Department of Public Security Police. I wanted to let the mayor and council know that the police department has been receiving some complaints of speeders on some of our roads. The shift supervisors have been made aware of that and they have assigned officers to a proactive speed enforcement detail. Not going to announce the time or the days or the locations now, but we do recognize that there is an issue and we are taking steps to correct that. The detail will last a period of time in which we think will be effective. It's not going to be a warning campaign, it will be a summons issuing campaign. So we ask the residents to continue to obey the speed limit as they, most of the time, understand that if they don't, they are just adding to the difficulties of maintaining speed. I can also tell you, we had personally on Wall Road, I was assigned to a two-hour detail sitting in the 1100 block of Wall Road. And during the two hours, the highest speed achieved was 39 miles an hour. And there were three that were in excess of the 25 mile an hour speed limit. Now, part of the problem over that two hours of only having three over the speed limit is the fact that I'm in a large SUV with police lights and whatnot. So they can see me from quite a distance and they adjust their speed accordingly.
Are you asking for a Mini Cooper?
What I have asked for, and please keep in mind, I'm only a patrolman, is a handheld speed monitoring device in which we could utilize the unmarked SUV that we have, the fully unmarked Dodge Durango that we have. And that will, if we're in the interest of getting a more true and accurate speed for those, probably give us that because of the inability for the driver to know exactly that that's a police vehicle and have a monitored end of speed. So we may see some paperwork or requests from you. That is a better asset than a Mini Cooper.
Isn't there a question a couple of years ago about cancer, most handheld?
Again, being the one that I am, I don't know if there's a cancer causing effect on the handheld. I can tell you that all of our marked vehicles are equipped with it. And so I don't know what the difference would be between a currently mounted unit as opposed to a handheld unit. And if there is, I'm sure that the good folks that will approve that will be glad. So we are aware of the problem, we are addressing the problem, so it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you step away, I was informed today by Robert Schaefer, Patrolman Robert Schaefer. I knew we had purchased them, but I did not know they had come in. And Zach is wearing one, so I would like him to show you what it is. And it is a camera so that when you are stopped and if there is any kind of a situation, correct me if I'm wrong, help me along, that this camera can be activated and you will be filmed.
So it's a volume one camera and all officers are, will be obligated to wear that at all times during shifts. And there is criteria when the camera gets activated so as to accurately and independently document a situation. There are times when it's mandated by the Attorney General that it get shut off. And we have all, oh, I should say.
Untrained on it.
Yes, yeah. I just went through it this afternoon. So I am aware of when, when it should or should not be used. Right now, it's not being used. Although you can see that the lens is exposed. When I slide the device down, it will show you two green lights indicating or indicating to the public that they are being taped. So.
Fix, fix.
From a, from my perspective, I like the fact that I'm going to be on audio and video so that these frivolous complaint, demeanor complaints and other complaints that we receive can be easily and economically fixed. There you go.
Thank you.
Come on, Joe.
John Cation, 564 Lincoln Avenue. I'm here tonight, I'm a member of the zoning board of adjustment. And Mrs. King, I just sidewalks before you reminded me of something. Often, according to our ordinances, when you put a, when you build a new house, you require to put sidewalks. But people come and apply for variance because they don't want to do that or they, you know, and they give reasons why, whatever. Now, a few, I believe it was over a year ago, maybe longer, I believe the borough engineer was working on a priority of where the sidewalks are most needed in town and where they're kind of might be optional. You did do that, Joe, right?
That plan, I believe, at the time that was a discussion.
Oh, was the plan done? Or it is.
It's so long, right?
Well, the board of adjustment never saw that plan. No one on the board of adjustment knows anything about that plan, so we've never received it.
I like to say too, I call sidewalks a nowhere. This is where you have no sidewalks in the whole street. You build a house, you put in a piece of sidewalk in front of your house. The idea through attrition will have sidewalks throughout the whole borough. I've been looking at it for 60 years and it's never going to happen.
No, well, that's, that's not really, the issue is that, yes, but that there's a priority. Certain streets that lead to a school, you might want to save the people here, you need to put the sidewalk.
Sure.
But we haven't gotten that plan.
So. So we introduce the mayor and council. Mayor and council, which is about to move some streets, they were removed. They were moved and the plan is down filed for all.
Yeah, I mean, in, several years ago, there was grant money available for that, you know, right, that path to school plan. And we got certain streets done, but I mean, I guess we could look for grant money because.
Well, that was the grant. The safe routes for schools. Two weeks ago, I submitted a grant for the same thing. We had an avenue where we were all.
Okay, so that's important. Yeah.
I can give a copy and I can give a resumé.
Yeah, that would be great.
Because it will help us in deciding what's an important street to have a sidewalk and what's one that might be optional.
Ultimately, it's on the council, the mayor and council to pass that, to make that happen? No, no, I'm not saying you shouldn't. But I mean, even though it's going to go to you, you would then come back to us and.
But your point was that if somebody comes for a variance and they're on a street that's marked as being a crucial one, you would say, no, look, we need to start walking on that street anyway.
And if it's not so crucial, we might grant it. It was just a guy.
Yeah, for our great idea.
For the board.
I'm pretty sure they're happy to bring it to the next meeting.
That would be great, yeah.
But can they change their policy in, just within the board? Not coming to us and.
Just don't have answers.
Yeah, he was.
Well, the policy right now is every house would have a sign.
We often grant variances to people who come.
New construction, right.
So all John wants is you can want guidance, that's all.
He wants the usage of guidance.
We have this report.
Variance that we're not, you know, allowing.
Send down the guidance, is that what? Yeah, that's all.
I think it sounds like it was something that was to be used as a recommendation, which is what kind of saying, so why there be a problem with the document?
No, no, it is. I just want to make it, how would you make it official?
I don't think he's asking you to make it official. I think he's asking.
No, I'm thinking, no, I'm thinking, how, how would that, how would that stop that practice? This board may not embrace that based on the talk they have.
I don't know that we're blocking the practice, it would just give them information.
What practice do you mean?
Well, isn't there, what makes you put a sidewalk in front of your new house now?
We're not making, we're, people are asking for variance and we're granting it.
If someone comes to you with a plan of a new house.
All new construction.
And that's a law.
That's a law, should have a sidewalk. But people apply for variances.
So how do you change?
So your point is.
How do you change the law?
Should we reconsider the law?
That's like, yeah, right.
That's not the issue.
That would have to come here, that's all I'm asking.
No, that's the issue he's bringing up.
That's my point. I understand that, it's been around forever. But how do you change it?
I think John, if he needs to.
When you, when John, when you say it's the law, it's local order.
There's a local order, it's a sidewalk.
So we have to come here to actually change, get rid of that law.
That would be our job to get rid of that ordinance.
So, so if you go to them there and would come back to us for action, if we choose to move on, makes sense. I would like to see the law changed and got rid. I don't think it works. I think designated certain routes for kids or whatever, that you have to have sidewalks and maintain them, makes perfect sense.
This doesn't work because the board grants the variances. If the board didn't grant the variances, it would work. People would have sidewalks.
That's always asking.
It would still be disconnected sidewalks.
He's already. He's already.
The intent of the sidewalk to nowhere, as you call it, is that eventually over time, it would be somewhere.
Yeah, but it doesn't work.
Well, it doesn't work because people are doing variances and they don't have to.
Right. Well, no, it doesn't work because it's only on new houses. Because every house that exists doesn't, doesn't have to do it. And most of our housing stops old.
You can change your ordinance then and say, any, any house that has a rebuild or a new, an addition needs to put a sidewalk. You can go in the opposite direction if you want sidewalks. So if you don't want sidewalks, that's another.
I would just get rid of the rule and accept in those areas designated by the town.
Yeah, but these aren't recharged. We can have that for guidance and we can work on the other.
Well, we'll talk about it when we talk about the district, but we could actually do so.
And when you do, if you decide to do this, my comment is that I like to walk a lot around town and I, it's not, you don't have to get, you don't have to get stuck.
So one way or another, you would like more sidewalks as the end result.
Personally, I would like a lot more sidewalks. But as a member of the board, I'm just asking for Mr. May's report so we can see where that's all.
We can provide you with.
I'm taking this opportunity to push my own agenda.
We all noticed.
Yeah, you noticed that. Now you've got bones about.
Great idea, John.
I want to get it back to you.
That doesn't mean we agree with you.
We agree that you.
It also includes major.
What?
It also includes major.
Not anymore, not the way they've determined. Two weeks ago, at the council meeting, when we adopted the salary ordinance and I asked some questions that I did not get specific answers to as to specific salaries. And I asked for an additional ordinance in order to be more specific, to have a little more transparency for the public. My understanding was, the mayor, that we were going in that direction. Subsequent to the meeting, I spoke to several council people and members of the public that were at this meeting. And they all felt the same way, that the mayor and council seemed on board, that their transparency was a big thing in Spring Lake Heights. And if we're not hiding anything, what is the benefit? They show an ordinance and adopt the ordinance. And of course, the argument is, why not just a resolution? Well, in New Jersey, we have a right to petition a salary ordinance, but only an ordinance, not the resolution. You cannot petition a resolution. And the clock starts from the date of publication of that ordinance. I was told tonight, we're not doing another subsequent ordinance, so we still don't know what anyone's getting paid. We have a range, according to this ordinance. Some people are paid between 60 and 113,750. Some people are paid between 128 and 150. Some people are paid between 25 and 90,000. That's a big range. I asked for transparency and specifics. And I really thought tonight when I came, that's the direction we were going. If we have nothing to hide, we have nothing to hide. But I was told, that's not what we're going to do. We're going to simply do a resolution. So the right to petition starts from, within 20 days of the date of publication. The ordinance doesn't go into effect for 20 days from the date of publication. So I believe the date of publication was last Thursday, that was July 21st. And the number of registered voters in Spring Lake Heights as of July 22nd is almost 4,000, 3,916 people. So 200 signatures will petition that salary ordinance and it will go on the ballot in November. I spoke at length today with our mayor and I explained to him, that will cost us a lot more money than it would to just pass an ordinance for a couple hundred dollars. Just show people, if this is what they were being paid in 2015, this is what we proposed for 2016. And that's simple. I was told we're not doing it. I'm really disappointed. I'm disappointed in, in our council that we just can't. If we have nothing to hide, what are we hiding?
You said that twice. Can I ask what your suspicions are since you think.
You said that twice. Can I ask what your suspicions are since you think...
Well, the salary ordinance was not on the agenda. The salary ordinance was added as an agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. It was intro'd that way. And I came up and asked for a copy of the ordinance at the late introduction and was told it's not available. We did not, the ordinance was not presented until the public hearing. So I asked questions, here are the questions that need to be answered and presented with the salary ordinance. What's the cost of that salary ordinance to the public? What is the overall cost of the raises this year to the public? What's the cost per hundred dollars that we may be saving in our taxes?
But am I missing something? I thought the salary ordinance simply established positions and range salary. It doesn't say that anybody's guaranteed that payment at all or who has those positions.
No, it does. You're absolutely correct.
So what would be the tie to put individuals on there with what? I'm confused by this. And I guess it's because this is only my second time doing this, but last year I don't remember any of these questions. So I'm sorry if I'm asking fundamental stuff. I'm missing something.
When the ordinance was introduced before we sit down, because two weeks ago was when it was adopted. So two weeks before that, it was intro'd. The intro came with, there will be a two percent, about a two percent raise in Spring Lake Heights for employees. So when the question was, well, who will get a two percent raise? Will everyone get a two percent raise? No, some people will get more, some people won't get any. Well, who?
Maybe this is a question for Gary. That's not decided by the salary wage ordinance, is it? That just says...
There's going to be a subsequent resolution that will set all of that...
But that appoints our employees for the year, right? Isn't that essentially what's...
This is the salary. The resolution follows the ordinance and that sets the salary. The ordinance establishes the ranges between that ordinances.
So the resolution comes...
So is your question about what we're paying people for a certain job or what certain individuals are making to do that job?
What the raises are from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen. Because that's not clear to anyone, because we don't know, we have no clue what the raise is. If the range is, and I'm just gonna take one right out of the ordinance. If the range is, we have twenty-five thousand to ninety thousand dollars a year. And that's the salary range. What is the raise? Who is getting the raise? Is every single person? And that question, I asked that question at the public hearing and nobody could answer it.
But I don't think that's what's been done yet, right?
Well, that's what I was asking for.
I mean, I'm sorry I'm dealing with health issues, so I haven't been here, but have we finished that?
To be specific.
That is usually what we finish in the ordinance, I mean, the resolutions.
Right. So, but you can't, the public has no rights to petition or question a resolution. Under the statutes, you can petition the salary, any salary ordinance that gives a raise. Clearly, the one that was adopted two weeks ago did. It was published last Thursday. The twenty days will expire. So if we have two hundred signatures, we can present it to the clerk. The clerk certifies it and it goes on the general election ballot in November.
But that's only the petition, the positions that we have and the salary range we've established for.
Exactly.
Because we can't sit up there and discuss in public individual salaries and what they're being paid. Isn't that true?
Well, a resolution is public record.
We can have those conversations.
Of course. Absolutely. It's public record.
One of the things that we did ask for from you, though, was an example of another town that did it in that manner.
Okay, and I said it to you today, I said, I'm driving in my car, I have a Middletown right in the thing I...
The Middletown actually sits in their ordinance.
Absolutely.
They have a two thousand fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, they have the actual number for every employee.
And in all fairness to Or, I promise Or I've dropped these off and they've been sitting in the backseat of my car. But it doesn't, I didn't ask for it based on what anyone else does. I asked for it for transparency from Spring Lake Heights. It could have been an ordinance introduced with the resolution presented at the public hearing so that people could see. We see nothing. We see this huge range and some people are getting two percent. And then when I talked to Mr. Shulley, he said some people are getting four and some people are getting none. Well, who are those people? What people? Here. Specifics. My team are in car filming around getting my... Let me go. But that's, I was asking for transparency. And so under the statute, we can't petition a resolution. We can petition a salary ordinance. So if tonight we had the salary ordinance and we said, okay, let's do the ordinance and let's show people. I literally did the ordinance and I sent it to Tom and I sent it to Or to look at. And it says basically, this is what they got paid in twenty fifteen, here's what's proposed for twenty sixteen. You could see, two percent, three percent, four percent. What is the number? We don't know. Nobody knows the number. It's never been disclosed to us. So the only option, the only option right now is to petition that salary ordinance that was adopted last meeting. In order to ask for transparency, because it, you know, I really thought tonight that everybody would say, you know, that there's nothing to hide.
Well, there isn't anything to hide. I'm not opposed to putting it on a ballot in November personally, but I don't know if it serves the town well. Because that's meeting and the people in that range, basically, people make the top end of the range. That's what's been done here. And what having a big range allows us to do is if that person leaves and we have to hire somebody else, we can get perhaps another person for less money. So that was the logic that I understood. So I mean, if you want to put that and we have a specific salary that we have to pay position X for and we get a new person and we have to give them that same rate, it kind of handicaps us because we can't negotiate anymore.
No, because you're setting a specific salary for twenty sixteen. You're setting that route salary for that person. Look, we have more than ten public works employees. They're not all making ninety thousand dollars. So right now, we have twenty-five to ninety. That's a very specific ordinance with a very specific salary. That's what I'm asking for and that's what I did ask for. Look, if that's what the mayor council chooses to do, I don't want to do it this way. I don't want to see it on the ballot. I don't think that's fair to the employees of the borough of Spring Lake Heights.
What do they do if you gotta replace someone without range?
You amend the ordinance. You still have your range. You have a range.
Right. This doesn't have a range. This is by contract. This is listed by contract.
But there are some separate ways. The mayor and I talked about it. So for example, next year it would have...
It's by position, but they'll be placed, that's what it says.
But it would have the old range, proposed range, old salary, proposed salary.
Well, this doesn't give you raises. This satisfies some of your stuff. It tells you what each person's making by contract rather than range. It doesn't say what he made last year or what he's, or what, or any raises. You would still have to get the information from last year and compare it, like you can do now for us. That's all I'm saying, on that point.
But it's specific salary is what I'm asking for.
But they don't use a range at all.
They have a separate ordinance. A lot of them have two, three ordinances.
So they do a range, then they come up with this, like our resolution from this.
Right. They adopt the range ordinance and then they adopt their specific salary ordinance. And then when they hire somebody new, they can keep them within the range. Because the secondary ordinance...
Well, that's why you need to... Is it simply just, don't do it through a resolution, do it on the ordinance? Is that where it's...
That's what I was asking for, is that...
Okay.
It's not necessary.
It might not be necessary, but is there any advantage to it? I don't see any advantage.
Well, you're basically saying to do the same thing by ordinance that you would do with the resolution. So if you wanted to do that, you could go ahead and do it, but there's no reason why you have to.
I think that's... If I can take a step back to what I said before about discussing individual salaries. I understand that we can sit up here and talk about what people are getting paid, but we can't dive into individual people and individual considerations and things like that. I don't think that's proper. I think the way we do it is blanket across the board is the way it should be and we should adopt general policies. So if the issue is with the policy that people shouldn't get raises in certain departments or we should say status quo and that's a concern, I think that's what we should react to. So if that's the legitimate concern, I think that's the discussion we should have aside from all the other paperwork and how we do it. If the issue is people should not be getting raises, then I think we should have that conversation now.
No, I can't say that people should be because we don't know what they're getting. That's the problem. What is the tax burden with this proposed salary ordinance? We know there's a proposed, this was how it was presented to us upon introduction. It's about a two percent raise across the board. Well, so what does that mean to taxpayers of Spring Lake Heights? We don't know what we...
When we do the budgeting at the beginning of the year, we certainly do put things like that in, mostly to account for overtime and other things that may occur during the year that we can't predict for because that's a good plan.
We're not talking overtime, we're talking this raise.
But you asked about the salary and where's the tax burden for the raise? I'm saying that's built into the lump of the salaries that we do during the budgeting process and now with this is where we drill down to the individual elements.
But you would have to get a copy of last year's salary to compare it.
So perhaps then we shouldn't adopt a range until we have the salaries ready to go. And if we had the ranges ready to go and the salaries ready to go, you could have one ordinance and present it to the people and have a public hearing and say, this is what we have. Just like that ordinance where they have various...
But this ordinance wouldn't satisfy what you want. Because this is just saying what you can trash, we're still not giving you any increases. That, this, you couldn't tell who got a raise by this either. That's all I'm saying. All I'm saying, if you're giving this as an example, this isn't really what you want.
What I really want is what I gave you.
Right.
Do you have that view?
Well, except you have to add the salaries, the ranges, because that didn't supplement it to the salary with the ranges.
Right.
So we still have to do two ordinances.
Right. No.
Yeah, well, you should. Jay, can I, like, when we do this, can I...
There's no range about this.
How much range? The increases are for specific...
How did it?
Could we do something like that?
The governing bodies provide with the information on an individual basis. Once the ordinance is adopted, it takes effect. The council is presented with a resolution, the council discusses at length as far as where the individual salaries are set for individual employees within the Asapal trade. And the increase is part of that calculation.
But we don't drill down into individuals. We generally make a statement of half percent or whatever we decide. At least that's the way I recall it from last year. Wasn't that the one discussion we had?
It's sort of contractual. Like, the police department have one contract and it's different than...
Fairly, the contractual employees that are covered by a collective bargaining agreement are not included in this ordinance. Those are done as a separate ordinance that covers the more than a year of the contract. But to answer your question, I actually forgot what the question was.
We don't drill down into individual merits of who, guess what? We in general do, if we're going to do anything, it's uniform for all, isn't it?
As part of the preparation of the budget, as well as the development of the ordinance that was adopted, it was a blanket statement of a percentage across the board increase. But there were some adjustments that were made to that based on the pleasure of the council. Ms. Flores?
I wasn't here for that, I said... There will certainly, anything that we considered a stipend was frozen.
Okay, so I see where...
Yeah, we have to... That's okay.
The mayor and council salaries, for instance, were not part of that two percent increase.
Right. And that's kind of, my point is that we don't know that. We're not, no one's privy to that. And it's not that it's, it shouldn't be a big deal, but say, this is what it was in twenty fifteen, this is what it is we'll propose for twenty sixteen. And here's the costs to taxpayers.
But we did that from the budget side. I remember going over that during the budget and looking at the bulk items in each category for each salary set of what the increase was.
But you did that on a basis where you're doing all the salary and all of the overtime and...
Correct, but you asked what the burden was to taxpayers and I'm saying that was accounted for in the budget side.
Of the specific raise.
Sure, we can't give money out now that it's budgeted. We couldn't do a raise now that was a budget.
Okay, so let's say if the resolution is ready in two weeks. What is the burden of that resolution that increases our salary payout that we pay every two weeks? There's a burden associated with that, a number, an actual monetary value. What is that number? That's what I've been asking and no one has been able to answer. So...
I'm not sure how nobody can answer. Like I said, I don't have the budget stuff in front of me, but it's in the budget what we allotted for it and whatever we decide in the resolution that actually gets applied. That's how we put money aside for surplus. That's how we have money there for unforeseen expenses. That's how we get, that's how we plan for the future. So we may have allotted, say, two percent at the beginning of the year. When we adopt it, we may only apply one percent, a half percent or nothing. So I don't know what the numbers are because obviously I've missed a couple of meetings because I haven't been here, but you know, I'm trying to get a little better up to speed on what we're hashing out here, but it seems like if we have an issue with raises, we should have this discussion up here anyway and we should have input.
I think in the end, the numbers are there, it just, they could be better presented.
If you look at our ordinance, what we passed last week, you can't tell who got a raise. It doesn't answer that question. If you want to know that question, it's not answered by that. It does a lot of other things for us, establishes the rates, gives us the ability to pay our employees. But does it answer that question? No, it doesn't.
Did that give them a raise? Did that give them a raise?
Yeah. No, it didn't give them, but the number, yeah, it didn't do that.
Doesn't give them a raise.
The range, the range is what you're, the top of the range is what you're making. We're giving that range, we're increasing that by the percentage that we gave them. So if it's up two percent over last year, they got a two percent raise. And it'll be, it'll show in that, in the range. Because you can't pay them unless they increase the range.
Right.
Because the range is what they're making.
So the range basically sets the groundwork for the ensuing resolution to come up with the specifics. But once the ordinance, I, I'm sorry that you weren't here as a finance person because I think you did a great job with the budget, that's a lot of work. I was trying to ask the questions and wasn't getting the answers. And the mayor agreed, but it's not giving me the answer. The answer should be, you know, I wish you were here to give a presentation. Look, over, you know, the average person makes one point three percent more a year and we're gonna give ours two percent a year, etc., etc. That would have been great, but there was nothing, except for the agenda got amended at the time of introduction. I asked for the ordinance and I was told on introduction, it's not available.
Where is the resolution? Where are we in that process?
That ordinance, it's not available. That's not a good way to do a salary ordinance. We should be doing it where it goes on the agenda at three o'clock on Friday. It's there, people can see it, they know it's coming up Monday night. They want to discuss that intro, take it home, see it in the paper. It was just all done very, and the more questions I asked, the more answers I don't get. And at the last meeting, everybody felt that, and the mayor was saying, yes, you're right. I can see where you'd like more information. So we'll consider to, well, the mayor actually said that we should do ordinance. And then tonight I was told we're not doing ordinance. My only way to, a nice way to put it, is to show my dissatisfaction, is to petition the ordinance and hold it non-voyed until the taxpayers get to vote in the...
It should be noted that this is the way we've always done it here.
And that's fine.
But when you say things like, we're trying to rush it through, it sounds like John's trying, someone's trying to get over it. And I want to give that the impression, it's just the way it's always been done with the ranges. Never been questioned.
And it's rushed last couple of years.
Upon the intro, it was amended, the agenda was amended at, right here. It was, we didn't enter, we didn't start on the agenda on a Friday afternoon at three o'clock.
Well, no, that's a procedural issue.
That's procedural.
Which lays, it sounds like people trying to...
That being said, it was, I mean, there was a hearing about it two weeks prior.
And I spoke about it and asked for more clarity and I didn't receive it and we all agreed it could be done better.
Could we do something like when we introduce this stuff, Jay, to have that information about, you know...
Something else you...
Yeah, something else, something I said from day one. If that would do it.
Additional information that... Well, we had the resolution. We typically have the previous year's resolution and the year we're adopting. So I'm missing some part of that.
Well, we don't have that, but that's the problem. What you have, we don't have. Nobody sees everything of these broad ranges and we're all supposed to go, yay, yay, just here. Here's my pocketbook, take the credit card and go. We're just asking for clarity. What is the number?
I don't think that's fair either because you vote every November to put two of us up here. So I think that's a little unfair to say you don't have input on that. And we do work in the best interest of the taxpayers, but we pay taxes here too.
Well, I agree with you there.
I don't want to get defensive on this, but I can also say, don't you work for Coda Systems who does our ordinances? Don't you financially gain by ordinance changes?
Not me. I do not.
But you still work for the company.
Your company does.
I don't want to start throwing allegations here. I appreciate the discussion on the merits, but I'm starting to feel really defensive up here, hearing over and over again like we're trying to sneak stuff through and that's not the way I'm gonna deal with this.
But, but look, if you weren't here, it was not on the agenda, the mayor council sit down after executive session. We need to amend the agenda right now and add this salary ordinance at the last minute. Why are we rushing through a salary range ordinance?
I don't think we were.
But we acted at the time of the meeting when we started.
But I don't think we were rushing through it. I think it was just something that we decided we were gonna...
When we started, I asked for a copy of it and I was told it's not available.
Jay, maybe you could put some clarity of why it was put in at the last minute.
And why it wasn't available?
First of all, I'm not aware that it wasn't available. It's the, it was not decided to place it on the agenda until the council reviewed it, discussed it in executive session and gave the authorization. To answer the question as to why the numbers were not available, as we stand here today, the council has not authorized salaries for twenty sixteen that are, the salaries of which have been authorized by the ordinance and has now been adopted. So we can't, I can't tell you, the council can't tell you what the increase is because the specific salary optimization has not been made. The ordinance provides the framework in which it has to be made, but the specific salary for each employee is part of the resolution that the council started to discuss this evening. We'll continue the discussion at our next meeting. And once there is consensus reached on all the numbers have been reviewed, then it will be presented to the public.
In a form of resolution?
In a form of resolution.
And that's what I asked for two weeks ago. I was asking for an ordinance so that the public has the opportunity to see it, introduce it and have a public hearing. That's all I asked for.
Yeah, but I think Jay just told you that we're in a stepping process.
I think the point is that we actually have the actual numbers.
You want them all together, well, we...
No, not all, it doesn't have to be all together.
It can be an ordinance. Last week, my first question to the mayor council was, will there be an official ordinance?[1738.45] And they said no.
So, we have the ordinance for the range and then you want the ordinance...
Right, that's exactly what I said.
One thing I think we need to make clear here is that we as a council also ask for our borough attorney to get a legal...
And you should get a legal advice given to you by council.
Okay, well, anyway, we, we...
Mrs. Scott, to talk.
We have taken some information, let's put it that way, and put that into consideration. And that's why we're going the way we're going, with the ordinance and a resolution.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's our plan. I asked, but that doesn't mean that there's not going to be continuing discussion, as Jay just said.
Jay, when we bring the resolution, we don't, this way have to, we, we could introduce it and then we don't vote on it for two weeks, right?
Absolutely.
So, then there's two weeks...
Have a discussion on it and we'll have a discussion, I think we should get feedback, absolutely.
We should get some feedback.
Well, that's fine.
That's up to the council how you want to do it. I mean, there, there is no reason why you cannot proceed as planned with the ordinance and then the resolution. There's no reason not to do that. And you can, if you wanted to, treat the resolution like an ordinance.
Yeah, that's my thinking.
Or you could say, well, we'll give you what you'd like to have and you could do an ordinance. There's no need for that, but you could do that if you wanted to. That's up to you. But you can go forward in the way you plan to go forward, there's no problem with that.
But it's not written yet, so you can't go forward with it because the ordinance hasn't been there. But what I asked for at the meeting was, will there be an ordinance? Because the people don't have any rights on a resolution. And that ordinance, the first one is so vague, we have no detail. So, can we follow it up with an ordinance? And everybody said, sounds good, it's being transparent, it's giving more information, what's the big deal? And tonight, it's a big deal, you see, that's what I'm saying.
I think everybody thought that the, the big deal was the information and there's every intention, I think, that get the information out there and we may disagree with how that information is ultimately going to be disseminated. But it sounds like, if nothing else, there's, I think you cannot argue that there's not a desire for transparency. It's just whether or not it is transparency by your definition or by the council's definition.
Well, the problem is though, if you do it with the resolution, like we discussed, there's no...
I'm hearing your argument and I understand...
There's no red petition, there's nothing.
But where does that stop though? We just voted on a resolution to appoint a part-time or full-time on public work. Should that have been an ordinance so you could vote on it? So, you can petition it?
No, 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 I think that, because we're talking about an annual salary raise across the board is the way it was presented of, everybody's going to get two to a...
But that's, that wasn't decided in the ordinance, as we just discussed, that hasn't even been decided yet. So, the answer is to have the discussion here in front of everybody so everybody can have input. The goal of the ordinance is to have the hearing to have input, or is the goal to be able to recall later if you don't like what we decide? Which is the decision, to have input so you can be part of the discussion, have transparency, or so that if you don't like it, you can try and change it on my later via petition?
But that's the problem, is that I asked for more information regarding the ordinance and nobody knew the answer.
So, a discussion up here with everything before we move forward with who's getting what solves everybody's concerns. Is that fair?
A discussion, right, but what is, what is, what are people, you're absolutely right, but I don't understand why it just couldn't have been done when everybody was sitting here at the last meeting agreed, it could be more transparent and do it.
Part of it on me is, I like simplicity. And last year I sat up here and went through this process and we had a lot of discussion up here and there was a lot of feedback from the public and we went through it. So, this year when I look at it, I wonder, what are we changing? We did it last year and it worked. So, what is the problem we're trying to fix this year that wasn't a problem last year? Does that mean we've done it wrong in years? So, if the answer is, you want to be part of the discussion and we should have more up here and things shouldn't end up on the agenda at the last minute, that's a very reasonable concern that we can fix.
I hate that.
But redoing the process and changing things because this year on a whim, I think is very bad practice. I think there's a reason why prior practice holds so much weight. Because if you do it and it works, there are plenty of other things in this community that we can fix to help the community make things better. Why are we fixing things that aren't broken?
I'm not asking to fix something, I'm asking for transparency.
Can we have worksheets for people?
I think that's very reasonable.
Jay, I think, is there some amount of information that we could present at the back of the table? So, when we have it?
Absolutely, and it depends on the, the item of issue and discussion. Some things are rooted automatically on the agenda. Some items require the governing bodies review and discussion ahead of time. And we typically do that if it's an item of personnel, an item that, you know, there are various exceptions to the items that we discuss in public. And typically, we schedule those for an executive session. And I would say, as many times as not, we come out of the executive session with the determination, yes, let's place this, it's ready for public, a public vote. The council has concluded the discussion, it's ready. So, it really depends on the issue.
Oh, I have a question, who wrote this ordinance 2016-06? Who wrote that and put together the numbers for that? I would assume you did as a council in charge of finance.
Well, typically for the ordinance, for the ranges, we start based on what we decided during the budgeting process of what we wanted to allocate, and that's what we base this on. And then they had the discussion, why I wasn't here, obviously, because it would have been introduced, they would have had a hearing, they would have voted on it, and it would have been adopted through the normal ordinance process, correct?
Right, so you didn't write this though, you didn't put this together?
It's a template that they use every year and the numbers, I'm sure, are based on what we reviewed in the budget and that's what the hindsight went to.
And the council will recall, we actually started with last year's salary ordinance and there were notations as to what the increases would look like. That was drafted into a final form for intervention.
So, why can't we use that for that, just what we talked about at the meeting? That is the kind of information, it doesn't have to be personal notes on personal people, but that's what I was saying, how do we know there's, it's so vague?
But I think, I think that's true, but in also in that, there are also things that we're allowed to do if you were here for the meeting when Art was looking for some extra money for recreation. I personally don't take any salary for either emergency management or up here, that's 6,500, 6,600. I know there are other council people up here who do not take their annual money that goes to other areas. However, if next year I either don't run again or I lose, the next person coming in is going to need that money. If we erase that from either the budget or from the ordinance, now we need to find that money again. So, things like that happen, which is why that range is a good practice.
So, then, let me ask this for clarity. Everybody on this got a 2% raise?
The raise, we haven't been set up?
There aren't a raises, no.
Okay, so the number from last year's ordinance to this ordinance, how did we come to the number? Is it 2%, 3%, 4%? How did we come to this maximum? Does anybody, that's what I keep asking, and nobody seems to know.
I guess we're going to have to consult with you.
We came from the budget, right?
But any of the ones that went up, basically went up 2% and then took the rest off, then was...
They lock in 2%.
Or another some actually backed the budget.
My request is that some actually, I guess.
They don't want to say that.
Okay, so we go 2% is the problem, I'm down.
And we limit the stipends, they don't get ordinary.
Well, why don't you just get her last year's ordinance? This is easy, there's nothing to hide, we talk transparency, get last year's...
Well, thank you, I'm sorry that it was...
No, we appreciate the feedback.
I asked the mayor, I fully understood, I feel we're on the same page. Everybody else did too and I come back and I'm the monster, so... But I will tell you, many people have commented, they're glad that someone's asking for transparency. It's not, I'm not accusing anyone.
We're working the process here.
I mean, that's the problem, the answers are available, it's the fact that you're not getting the answers that you need. It's not a matter of transparency or accessibility, it's here. You can get last year's resolution compared to whatever we'll propose this year. You could have gotten last year's ordinance, it should have been here. There's, those are things that we can easily fix. I thought everything appeared on the back table and if that's something we need to address, those things are easy to fix.
Do that, right, Jay?
Thank you.
With last year's ordinance?
Cat Crump and 564 Atlantic Avenue, two things. I did not know John was going to speak in supportive sidewalks, but I would like to echo that. And I don't know, I know every one of you up here has walked around this town and you know that for about half of the town, you walk in the street. And as cars get bigger and as there's more accidents and people speed, it's very, very dangerous to walk in this town. And it would be really nice if the town was more walkable. And that goes all over. And I know, everybody says, oh, I won't have to clear the snow for my sidewalk in the winter. Suck it up, I've had the same sidewalk in front of my house since it was built in 1950. I replaced it, it was $3,000, Randy Newman put in, it's beautiful. You know, it's, people can walk on my side of Atlantic Avenue, they can walk up Part 6, they can walk up the Part 6 that got done with the safe streets to respring, whatever it's called. It's dangerous to walk around this town. And, you know, you want to encourage people to get out, to walk, it's healthy, it's the right thing to do, it's a sustainability thing. Hey, if you can walk for 10 blocks as opposed to, say, in your car because you're going out to the 7-Eleven to get a coffee, it's easier to drive because there's no place to walk.
And there's some value to what you're saying, obviously, we go up there and people are speeding, we have lots of dishes. But doing it through attrition is much different than you said, we need sidewalks and curbs. We only have curbs under the...
Oh, I know, I know.
I mean, let's start there. I can't even imagine, we had people not wanting a free sidewalk right out from the school for one block. So, so they're not that popular, but let's, let me say, it's different. If you want to put sides, sidewalks and curbs in towns in West Ballard. And that, that's an issue, but that's not that way. That doesn't work.
No, I understand, I understand completely, but the ordinance says, if there's new building, the person gives out, puts in a sidewalk. Now, you haven't been to a board adjustment meeting, Art, so you probably don't know the board adjustment now gives out variances like Halloween candy. It used to be that they...
Well, what I'm saying is you didn't have to, I don't think it would be a rule. Get rid of it, they wouldn't have to do that.
But if they, if, if the board adjustment did what they were supposed to do and they hear the code was still giving everybody variants, half of the town would have a sidewalk by now.
I think it'd still be like...
No, we haven't had that.
It'd be like a dotted line as opposed to a...
And it doesn't count a major relation?
I mean, I, I think it's, we, we need to look into seeing, well, first of all, I mean, if you, if you're going to make a plan to commit the sidewalks, it's going to cost money. So, where's the money going to come from? So, we either need to, you know, budget for it or find if there's other grants out there. Are there grants to like... To create catheters, right?
That was why Frank Prussolessi had that law changed because when Frank Prussolessi was the chair of the planning board, his concept was, you don't want to go out and assess the whole town for sidewalks and curbs. They did that at one time, I know Butch was one of the people that counted in that.
That's the way we did it.
They said, if we do it incrementally over time, the whole town will get done.
He's wrong.
And the problem, well, because they, you better make it...
I'm sorry about that.
Well, because there are houses that don't get in construction for over 75 years and, I mean, there's definitely a ton of houses in this town that are over 50 years old.
Well, I have the floor, I'm speaking, I have the floor. And all I want to say is I support more sidewalks.
Okay, Jay.
My second question is a question for the clerk. Are public workers' salaries, are they part of the OFA records that are provided to you immediately or are they only the seven day? I know contracts I can get immediately.
Well, that is a contract, so I would say yes.
Okay, so I will send you the OFA form tonight for last year and what they will be for this year. Because that's the question, what is everybody's raise amount going to be from last year to this year? That's what we want to know. Okay, so I'll put that in tonight when I get home, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you very much for your service, you guys did great. Captain said, I have a request. Matt McKean, the head pro over at the golf club, asked me as a board member of the Little League if he could borrow the two portable bleachers power lineses just for this weekend. The golf club is having a tournament over there and they want to create a viewing area for people to watch a certain area of the tournament. I'm a current board member of Little League, I thought it'd be a simple note out to my fellow board members asking, would it be possible, we just move them over there and they use them, we move them back? I was told I had to come here in front of the council, I reached out to Jay, and this was this morning. So, I'm just asking, would it be possible to borrow the two 8x12 foot bleachers?
I don't even know their art, I mean, do you?
Well...
I forget who bought them.
I checked with my fellow members.
We didn't know, we figured we'd ask you.
If they're all rusty and wooden, I'd say we wouldn't.
Would you say about the, just a agreement that if they broke them in the movement process, if they replaced them, otherwise, yeah?
I can afford that.
Yeah, I mean, that would just make sure that they're going to care, be careful and then we'll move them back and save, you know?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with them borrowing them.
Thank you very much, you guys.
I never would have done it if you borrowed them.
You like that one?
Hi, Karen, it's Vanessa, the 812 stuff. I want to thank Mr. Champion for the crosswalk comment for the community center park. Having two of those kids over in the area, it's essential that there's one there. I would also recommend the Ocean Road Park up the road, there'd be one there as well. Okay, and I'm not sure if you need the pedestrian sign, but we don't have marked crosswalks anywhere across Ocean Road. And there are so many people that walk from the north side of Ocean Road to the south side, they do it with the kids every day during halftime. And I'm trying to teach my little one how to walk across the street and look for the crosswalk. There's nothing there.
I tried to do, my two little ones trying to cross Alair Road from Alair Road Park and I still can't get cars to stop in marked crosswalk with giant neon signs, so I can't imagine what you're going through over there, but it's a very hot priority.
No, but you're saying that every...
The Ocean Road Park will people pick that up?
I would love a yellow sign at the Ocean Road Park and one at the community center park. I'm not sure, I would, that's not budgeted for and they have a line around, but I think...
We can find money for garbage cans, we can find money to replace fence, we can find money to put up safety crosswalks on major roads.
And that should be there.
Yeah, I think we're all...
And I'm just noticing with the kids riding the bikes, who the other places are along 71, they're all at Dunkin' Donuts, they are going from 71 Dunkin' Donuts to Seager along the bridge. There's nothing there, they need to be marked, you know, right along. There's the walkway, they need walkway there.
Do you think there's a walkway on, on the east side of that bridge?
Yes.
But not on the, on the west side?
No, there's a sidewalk along 71, but the cross...
Across 71?
Yeah, there's no crosswalk.
I mean, we can work on that, but that is not just us who are paying the fines.
That's a state or whatever, but you're right, in order to cross that...
Not that it can't be done, but it just can't be done by our public works guys with some paintbrush and put it down.
But that's a, that's a, that's a good, good point.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Eric, I'm in honor of favor, I'd like to echo Paris' comment about the crosswalks on Ocean Road, really big help. And I'm glad to see that they're going to be looking to get some shade in that grant for the park, for the community center, so it would be a big help there. What I would like to request is, meaning that east side of Ocean Road is no parking, some of the no parking signs are missing, mainly between Ninth Avenue and about 913. There's like a big gap of no parking signs. And one was taken, knocked out at a work of a removal company built years ago. And I was assuming they were going to drop it over there to put it back up. It's a big old problem that people are using the community center for events and they're parking on the east side of the road and it's very cumbersome for two-way traffic to get through, to be able to get the drivers. And people stole, even, there's still not even a sign even over there, but there's at least one or two signs that are missing that five hours stretch that could be replaced or put back in or whatever else to help with that. Just area with the meters and it's crossing, or it's crossing.
Thank you. Get together then. Okay, thanks.
Hi, I'm Catherine Hahn, Central Avenue. The sidewalks are great and I would love if someday we could budget for them from Shore Road all the way down to the railroad tracks. There is absolutely nowhere to walk. People are riding their bikes, they're walking with children, they're walking with dogs, and that should definitely have sidewalk, you know, where I mean, Shore Road by our sign all the way down to the railroad tracks.
Okay.
That before of any other sidewalks, like in front of people's houses. That's our public, it should be essential. And I'm here 40 years and we've been wanting it, never happens.
It'd be nice if there was a sidewalk out to like the Acme and Wal-Mart's too.
Might be nice, and then also, August 2nd is our National Night Against Crime that was, is national and is a block party per block that protects the neighborhood. So, our block is doing it, the 800 block and 1020. And we encourage everyone in town to participate. We did in the past, then it went to the roadside. We have to bring the spirit back to Spring Lake Heights. It's almost like we have a black cloud over it. There is no community involvement in anything anymore. Years ago, we did, um, when we started beautification, Eileen and I did the five K race. That we took away, it seems like we take everything away. There's no spirit, we have to bring it back.
You know what's crazy? The school is, is wonderful. It, it, there's a, there's a disconnect. Because I see so much participation, people helping out the school though. And it just, for the community, it just dies off.
It just dies off.
We just have to find an event to get people.
We just have to start to really pick up the event and, you know. And we have to see how old our town is, I know we're in fifty.
Next year, next year is ninety.
Is it ninety?
Next year is ninety?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah.
Is it ninety?
Yes.
Very definitely, very definitely.
You still do blockwork, aren't you?
What was that?
Twenty-eight, not twenty-seven.
It's the National Night Out Against Crime. And our two-sol, series two sometimes put a little block, like a roadblock on that street for us. They have done it in the past, so, but is, is National right there?
Yeah, so in years past, the National Night Out, uh, it, it's been co-sponsored, uh, co-organized by both Spring Lake, Spring Lake Heights, Seeger's been involved, Old Town has been involved and it has been held at the National Guard Armory or the debates in, in Seeger uh, because of the multiple agencies that were involved. And at one point, they had helicopters coming in and they had different, uh, large-scale recreation activities to get more involvement. So I haven't been here at, during which time it's been held in Spring Lake Heights before. Uh, but of course, anything in which the police department can get more involved with at the community level, at the street level, we would love to do. But again, being a patrolman, uh, this would have to be discussed at a higher level than I turn and inform us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Burger, quote, thirteen ponder, okay, and all of these things. One, since we're talking about the traffic, both Alair Road and Ocean Road, besides putting in sidewalks, could we find a way to get permanent, those speed, record your speed right when you come into town? Not both of those.
Other signs, the speed signs.
The signs, yeah, and I know we've had them in the past and people are cutting the wires and stuff. Is there a way to get it so they can stay up? Because at least that would give people something to, especially with the intersection of, at Ocean Road and Old Mill Road. It's still, I mean, it, it's much better now that we have the new configuration, but it's still, especially in the summer, people really come and, you know.
I just spoke to Jay about that today, as a matter of fact, because I found out from the chief that some of the signs have broken. And, um, I told Jay to give me a price on what the replacement factor is because I agree with you, we do need some of these, um, current roads. Old Mill Road is another one that, you know, we could put up in a couple of, yeah, places. So, um, I don't know whether I was reading your mind or what. But, um, but I did mention that to Jay today.
I have, no, next question is, um, Joe, we're talking about putting in trees at, uh, far, uh, creative center. But I don't think there's, there aren't any sprinklers there, are there? I know that's how we.
And we're not necessarily saying trees.
You said shade.
Shade, well.
There's fabric, there's, there's a lot of ways to get shade.
Well, so putting it in greenery and we want to think about. I know you didn't say.
They make, um, top office integration with basically giant umbrellas.
Okay, all right, so we're not putting greenery, otherwise, it wouldn't be alive.
Trees are good until a limb falls on them.
On that too.
It's a problem.
Where they find in the tree.
Or they're in the tree, or that becomes a playground, like, well, what else could it be?
Oh, and since we're, you can mention Night Out Against Crime, certainly remember that. But we are having, the event is taking place at the Seeger again, I'm, I'll just say. It was sponsored by, um, you know, I don't know, I, I wrote it down on my calendar the other day. It's usually around like five in the afternoon, it's about, yeah, something like that, I can't find that.
Yeah.
Sponsored by the, well, the alliances are involved and the police departments and all that.
That was the second?
Yeah, yeah. And as we were talking about, the next year is the ninetieth anniversary, so, you know, we, seventy and seventy-fifth, we did big events. You might want to think about doing a big event together.
I think we should, yes.
I think they would want to, they'd start thinking about that, some events.
Last time we had the, well, they had the, the museum.
The museum, right, the American Park. Oh, that was great.
Oh, well, it was great, it's a lot, a lot of talk about it, get people into it, that's a lot of hard work and final stuff again. But, uh, but it was wonderful. And, uh, and at Laramore Park, we had the bands, we had, yeah, it was a big thing, it was probably nice there, I remember.
Yeah, we had all that, yeah.
Yeah, well.
The big tent.
Captain, is there a, is there an incorporation date of those, if you know what it is here? Just curious.
If we can't find it, just think of.
Whatever is the Warren Drive.
Like, the middle's September, it would be nice.
It's probably January first.
Just September first. October first.
Okay, those are mine.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
Seeing no other hands, do you want to say something? Come on up.
Union rounds, group four here. Uh, ordinance twenty sixteen oh seven, been moved tonight?
Yeah, right, I'm telling you about that.
The. The lease, no, it did not, it was waiting for screening for some, right?
Thanks, Eric.